Okay, so noting the time and the presence of quorum, we will reconvene in open session after having been in executive session. So I start the meeting as always with citizens' concerns. If anybody has any issues that they would like to address that are not on the agenda, you may do so briefly.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. The Trust for Public Lands did a study not too long ago studying the number of acres preserved per capita and showed various cities. And I was pretty horrified to find out that Acton was less than Philadelphia and some other large cities in terms of the amount of, number of acres per person. So I hope that we take note of that and put together a major land purchase, major land purchase program at some point to ensure that we have enough acres per person to at least catch up with the cities. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other, yes, Angie?
Angie Song, Ballasong. We just want to, I just want to take the chance to thank the Board of Selectmen for providing the opportunity and provide zoning bylaw and for the, to ban the recreation of marijuana. We want to thank you for that. And in the case of that either the November or the December vote will fail, so this zoning bylaw will take effect. But at the same time, in case of the two-thirds of the vote for the zoning bylaw changes, if it didn't pass, right now, there is really no protection for the, for town of Acton. So I'm coming here to request to take into consideration, because in June 2018, the Attorney General granted the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to extend the moratorium until June 2019. So I'm coming here to request to take that into consideration, as well as taking the consideration of recommending the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. So we will, we have not had a chance to think about that, but we'll discuss if we want to put that on a future agenda to talk about a moratorium extension. We've been focused on the, the language for the ballot question.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
And then we will discuss our position and whether or not to take one on the zoning article on November 5th, just so folks know if they want to come then.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else for citizens' concerns? Great. Okay, the chairman's update. I want to start by congratulating the Acton Nursing Service on receiving home care elite status for 2018. This status puts them in the top 25% of all home care agencies in the U.S., which is a really great honor and one they've received in the past, and it's wonderful for them to have it again. So congratulation to Acton Nursing Services. The League of Women Voters will be hosting a candidates forum on this Thursday night in this room, Room 204 of Town Hall, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. with the candidates for the Middlesex and Worcester State Senate District, the 14th Middlesex State Representative District, and the 37th Middlesex State Representative District. Not sure, I assume it will be on Acton TV as well if you're unable to attend on Thursday night. The Planning Board is also having their hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw changes for special town meeting, which include the proposed marijuana retailer zoning amendment, which would, and the hearing will be at 7:45, again in this room tomorrow night, Tuesday night. And as a reminder to everybody, Wednesday is the deadline to register to vote in the November election, so if you're not registered, make sure to get to Town Hall and get registered by Wednesday evening. And the Friends of the Acton Libraries will be having their book sale this weekend at the Acton Memorial Library. I believe the preview night is on Friday night for members of the Friends, and then there's the book sale on Saturday and Sunday. It's always a great event, and I spend way too much on getting books that I don't have time to read, so I encourage everybody to stop by and, and support the Friends of the Acton Libraries. And that is my update, Mr. Manager.
Excuse me, thank you. I just want to congratulate the Acton Fire Department for a great celebration over the weekend. It was 125th anniversary, it was a beautiful parade and a gathering at the station, and even though it was raining, everybody had a really great time. There was a great turnout. I came with my family and were very excited to, to learn about the fire department and see the old fire engines. It was, it was very cool. So congratulations to the fire department. I just want to make sure that the public is aware that early voting for the state election and the special town election starts next week on Monday here in this building, and there's more information on our website. I'm pleased to announce that we received a grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Housing Choice Grant Award. It's for $165,000, and this funding will be used to make infrastructure improvements to Satrium Way. I want to recognize Roland Bartle and the planning staff who put together a great application. And so we're very excited to have that program award. Also, congratulations to Acton TV. Acton TV won first place for Best News Magazine in what's described as the Emmys of cable television. So they went to New York over the weekend to receive their award, so congratulations, Acton TV. Special Town Meeting, at the last board meeting, the board opened and closed the warrant. The warrant is closed as of today, so we will start working on putting that together for your review over the next few weeks. They, I had my budget workshop on the Hill on Friday. We brought it back to the Hill on Audubon Drive, so that was fun. Learned a lot, a lot of great new priorities from the departments, and I look forward to working with you all in the community over the next few months on the budget process. Acton, Acton Area Manufacturing Group, we had a great event last week, or October 5th, where Selby, our Economic Development Director, led a tour of a few of our local manufacturers with students from Minuteman Tech. They went to Hartz and they went to AES and had a great time, so thanks to Selby and thanks to the manufacturers and the students for participating in that. And actually, Acton TV covered it, so you can check it out on their website if you want to learn about the, the manufacturing. And on a sadder note, much sadder note, we had a tragedy in the community within the last few weeks. There was a vigil held on Friday night. It was a really moving opportunity for members of the community to get together, and, you know, it's something that we're going to continue to discuss and, and understand, but I just want to take a moment to extend our condolences to the family and those involved, and also to thank our first responders who performed outstanding despite the circumstances, so.
Excuse me, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Okay, so up next is our public hearing at 7:10 p.m. This is a public hearing on the public shade tree removal at 146 Prospect Street, and I will turn that back over to you, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So in accordance with Chapter 87, we held a public shade tree hearing for, on the request of 146 Prospect Street LLC, for the removal of five public shade trees. This was held in September 13th. And since during the hearing there was a resident or a few that raised opposition to what was being proposed, it reverts the process to, to the Board of Selectmen level. So we're here to report to you the trees that are being discussed, and then a recommendation from the, the tree warden and my office on how to resolve this issue. So we, we were considering five trees, 25-inch white pine, 39-inch white pine, a 46-inch white pine, a 43-inch white pine, and then there was also a 13-inch elm in the mix. And we had a professional arborist certify, certified arborist review the condition of these, and one, the, one of the white pines was deemed to be a high risk for failure, and so its removal was not really part of the, the hearing process, so that's why it only had five trees in the process. So due to significant construction damage to the root systems, the trees mentioned before are safety hazard to both the road and to the houses that are planned to be built there, and we're recommending that they be removed. The town has a bylaw that's been in place for quite a while with, with regards to what happens when trees like these have to be removed, and it basically requires that an equivalent width of trees be replaced, and a value, we had our tree warden do that and assign a value to that, and basically, the amount of trees that are being removed has a value that if we replace them with trees that we feel are appropriate for the setting and set them back appropriately from the roadway and, and a good enough distance from the homes, and make them be trees that are species that are appropriate for shade trees, and provide that the property owner does a deed restriction to permanently protect those trees under the Chapter 87 protections for which these ones were previously held, and that the property owner also contribute towards the Tree Mitigation Fund to help offset the loss of the, the width of trees so that we can replant other ones in areas that need to be planted, and that a bond be held in a sufficient amount to ensure that the work is performed in accordance with our expectations. In addition to that, since the trees are damaged, we would require that the property owner remove the trees and the stumps, and do so in a fashion that doesn't damage the roadway, and also to repair the sidewalk that is very close to the trees. So that's the proposal that, or that's the, the situation, and then the recommended course of action that staff is recommending to the board.
Okay, thank you very much for that summary. Are there any questions or comments from board members? No? Janet?
I just have a question in reading. I didn't notice whether the proposal is to replace the, the trees with trees like the ones that are being replaced, like pines for pines, or, because I was, I was going to ask if maybe there would be some consideration to replace the pines with something better. I just, you know, you know, it's, pines are, grow really fast, and they can pose a hazard because they have shallow roots and they grow very tall, and then they have nothing in the bottom part, and, and then they also shadow, they create all this shade so that, you know, deciduous trees have difficult time getting, kind of growing, and you end up with this monoculture, so, and then pine trees are kind of, I wouldn't want to be in a house with big pine trees around it, but, you know, I just, so, go ahead Andrea, sorry.
A final approved landscape plan will be decided on and negotiated. There's a few trees that have been proposed. I've proposed a couple other trees. It's still all to be worked out, but we didn't want to have to hash out the landscape plan itself to the Board of Selectmen in the meeting. It's all between the arborists that we have, our own arborist on duty, and the landscaper. I think we can negotiate a suitable planting plan.
But to answer your question, they will not be pines?
No, they will not.
And then just one follow-up. I mean, if, if you're getting, if you, if you're getting better, bigger trees, then, you know, I assume that any decent landscaper would know not to jam them all together. Whatever, whatever the original pines condition were, you know, maybe they were crowded, more crowded than is optimal, but, you know, space them out so they'll have a chance to spread their wings, so, thank you.
Joan, you ready?
These will be on the owner's property, not in the public way?
I've proposed that they be outside the right-of-way, but they'd still be protected by deed protection.
And then I just had a quick question about the, the contribution to the fund, because I wasn't as familiar. Is this a fund that then you, Andrea, kind of keep and use to plant trees elsewhere in town, on town property?
Specifically.
Okay, great, excellent. Okay, no other comments from the board? Are there any other comments from members of the public?
Hi, Jim Snyder Grant, Half Moon Hill. Just two comments. Well, I'm wondering how the amount was calculated, the $5,000? Because when I think of, you know, 46-inch diameter trees, these are magnificent large trees that have been around for a long time. It's just hard to believe, it's hard to understand where such a small amount of money would come from. So that would be a question. The comment would be, there's been some important failure of process here that you might want to take nota for the future, that if these shade trees had been identified earlier in the process, then the permitting could have required protection of the trees. Instead, what we have is construction damage that's caused, you know, all these trees to be required to be removed, including an elm. You know, full-grown elms are kind of rare around here because they tend to get the elm disease, so it's especially sad to see that one go. The other thing that could have happened if the shade trees had been identified more early in the process is the plan could have done things like not plan for driveways that come directly out through the middle of a public shade tree. That shouldn't have been allowed on a plan. So there's, I think we, I think there's something wrong in the process where we're not identifying shade trees early enough in the, in the process of looking at plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, John.
So with regard to the cost, when we consider the cost of removing the five trees that were part of the process, to remove them, if, if we were just to assign a value and ask for a check for that value, it would be close, it would be closer to $20,000, but the cost of removing the trees and the stumps and then repairing the situation that's left behind, and also removing the other tree that wasn't part of this process that the town would have to be responsible for, and then also the cost of planting the new trees, and there was one other thing that we offset to identify the number. That would have been the police details, but yeah, that, that, that'll have to be either way. But so, in other words, it, it considers the work that's being done.
Thank you.
And, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Yes?
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. How much is it per inch? Is that how it's determined, is by inch on the, for the equivalent? I'm trying to figure out how the equivalent is, because when I took the Concord, they have a bylaw for preservation of trees, and they charge $375 per inch for each tree that's being replaced, and I'm wondering how we figure out what the equivalent dollars are, because I calculated it up according to their rules, and it was like 50,000 to 80,000, depending on how you interpret the inches and the...
The town's policy does not have a direct number per inch. I based it on recent purchasing of trees, non-pine trees.
Thank you.
Multiplied it out, and we came up with 19,000, and that does not include the labor for planting.
Thank you. So I would look at our process for determination and have it be in line with at least more recent, I don't know if it's, the way, figure out where, why they're collecting $375 an inch, and maybe figure out, maybe it's because they're bigger trees and that we want bigger trees, I don't know. And then the, I don't, I don't know who else was at the hearing, but there was a woman that came in a wheelchair, and she had an oxygen tank, and, and she was literally in tears that these trees would be gone. She rests there in the shade when she's in her, on her walk every day, and she wanted to ensure that the trees that would be planted are actual shade trees, because Holly Ben Joseph, who's the Chair of the DRB and also a landscape architect, she said that the trees that were being offered were, were not shade trees, so she made some comments, and I hope that you work with her to, to ensure that the trees are what, I guess she would consider shade trees, in sympathy for the nice lady that would like to sit there in the shade. I'm hoping that that will happen. See Joan nodding, thank you. And the idea of construction damage on the trees, I, I just, I asked this question at the hearing, and I didn't feel like I got an answer, and I, I feel like professional developers know the trees right against the sidewalk are public shade trees, so I was just wondering if anybody's asking why they would damage the trees, and, and so I don't need an answer now, I'm just posing the question to us as society. And then I mentioned, I'm going to mention process. I feel like the plans that come in should immediately have the public shade trees, and I think they should be to scale, because when I look at some of these plans, there's a little dot, and it says 36-inch tree, yet on the plan, if you put a circle around it that would be 36, you'd be clearly see that the building is, or the driveway is right on top of the public shade tree. So that's something we can do too. And then for anybody that's reading The Secret Life of Trees, the German scientists are talking about how the stumps carry a lot of knowledge that is then transmitted and kept, the trees keep that, those stumps nourished, and there's electrical impulses that, that share information with the other trees. I know it sounds crazy, but this is scientifically based, and so I urge you, maybe it's already too late, but to keep these stumps, these old stumps live thousands and thousands of years. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, so no other public comment? Are there any other comments from board members? Okay, then can I have a motion on the proposal?
I guess move to approve the, the results of the hearing, I guess it's, the mitigation plan, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Janet moves and Joan seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and up next we have a presentation on the Minuteman Regional Technical High School building update from Pam Norris. So Pam, if you don't mind coming up. Thank you very much.
Oh, I did have a presentation. Okay, thanks. So while we're waiting, I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to come and give a little update on Minuteman. I will try and make this pretty brief and would like to make sure that we end by gauging any interest in a, thank you, in a possible tour of the Minuteman construction that's going on. But what I would like to cover is just a little overview, reminder of Minuteman, a little bit about the building project, campus development, and enrollment. Okay, what is Minuteman? Well, just again, very briefly, because I know many of you have, are very familiar with Minuteman, but what really makes it special is combining really high-quality teaching of career and technical skills with very robust academics. And when we talk about these vocational career and technical skills, we're not talking about the vocational school of, I was going to say of your parents' time, really of my time when I was in high school, which at that point was just trades. I mean, what we're talking about is, is topics such as advanced manufacturing, engineering and robotics, design and visual communication, culinary, environmental science, biotechnology, in addition to some of the traditional trades. In addition, when we're talking about robust academics, you know, just a reminder that Minuteman offers AP classes, over two-thirds of the students at Minuteman do end up going to college. So the academic program is modeled on what we call an academy model, where there are two different academies, and the new building, it was especially designed to accommodate these two academies. One is Engineering Construction and Trades, and there are about seven or eight majors that fall under that, and then there are Life Sciences and Services, and again, another seven or eight majors that fall under that. And what the academy really gives an opportunity to do is, it gives an opportunity for students to really work with a group of students, a group of teachers throughout their entire time at Minuteman. And it gives the vocational technical classes and the academic teachers also a chance to be working together. So we have a lot to say on that, but I will just kind of go through that. If anyone has questions, I will back up. This is kind of my brag sheet, just a few recent highlights from Minuteman. We have received Level 1, which is the highest rating from Department, DESE, Department of Education. We have done very well on our MCAS testing this year. We received a AA bond rating. We have received over 500,000 in grant funding for equipment, particularly for the advanced manufacturing programs. This is very important as we move into the new building. We also received a $1.4 million grant for a photovoltaic canopy over the student parking, and just recently, we were recognized as a national blue ribbon school. So, the building project update. At every school committee meeting, we start with, you know, our two questions on the building project. Is it on time and is it on budget? And the answer to both of those is yes, so we're very proud of that. So a little bit about some of our major milestones. Working very hard right now to get the building to be weather tight, you know, for the winter, and then we'll be working on all those interior things. That's my technical term here. As I said, we are still on, you know, on time expecting the certificate of occupancy in July, and expecting to have students in the building at this time next year. Just had to include a few pretty pictures. So this is where we are with the main entrance, working on an interior shot, and again, some of us really like these construction shots, another view of the campus. So in addition to the building itself, another important part that the administration and school committee have, has been talking about is the campus development. Because if you remember, and I'm sorry I don't have a site map with me, but the current Minuteman school is in the Lexington corner of the property. The new building is in the Lincoln far corner of the property, leaving a lot of property that could be open for other opportunities where the current school is now. So that's what we've been talking about, and we're talking about it in two phases. And phase one, that the school committee has just talked with the administration about starting conversations with the town of Lexington to really augment the athletic fields. If you remember from when we talked about the building project earlier, what was in it was a very bare-bones plan for the athletic fields. And we're entering conversations with, with Lexington where they would help to contribute so that we could expand the number of athletic fields, be able to add bleachers, lighting, other good stuff, and really something that will sort of augment and enhance the students' So the second part, you know, we are contracting with the UMass Donahue Institute to really help us oversee looking at other development opportunities, particularly for the area where the current building is right now. And we did have special legislation passed this summer that would allow us to enter into a lease, up to 50 years for this purpose. As I said, we're going to be working with UMass Donahue Institute to put out a request for letters of interest later on next spring, a request for proposal, to really be looking at and be able to assess what opportunities are there out there, and what would be the best opportunity for Minuteman. And one reason why this is particularly of interest is not only potential ways to augment the experience of the students, is because the revenue from something like this, what we're hoping we will be generating revenue that would reduce the capital obligations of the member towns. One of the top priorities right now for Minuteman is looking at enrollment. And you can see from this chart, the blue line is overall enrollment, the red line is for member towns, and that really sad yellowish-greenish line is from non-member enrollment. Our, at this point, our freshman enrollment, as you can see, is down, and that decrease is being driven by a decrease in non-member enrollment. And a lot, a lot of the reason for that is related to regulations that do make it harder for non-member students to attend out-of-district vocational schools. There is a regulation that if a district offers a Chapter 74 exploratory program, a ninth grader is required to attend that program in their own district, even if it's not in the major of his or her interests. And we can see what impact that's been having on our enrollment. So again, a few more numbers. You can see how our out-of-district enrollment is going down right now, leading to a decrease in enrollment. in enrollment. Our goal with the new building, the new building was built to accommodate 625 students. We're not giving up on that. We're doing a lot of things right now to try and address enrollment. We've set up an enrollment task force to be looking at how to increase in-district enrollment. There's a few things that we have in place right now. The district has hired an assistant admissions director, so we have additional people who are able to go out, be talking to students, be working on those presentations. We're putting some emphasis on how do we not only reach students, but also how do we reach parents? And we're putting into place what we're called parent liaisons in targeted member towns, I think including Acton will be one of them. And the goal is to have someone who can really be seen as a parent Minuteman representative to be meeting with parent groups, to be attending admissions events, you know, to be an identified person that parents can be going to with questions about Minuteman, and who can really be helping to augment the admissions work in each town. We've als, we're also doing a lot of work on improving the website, having a greater social media presence, and hoping that, you know, this will help kind of turn around some of those numbers. This is the Acton enrollment. You can see we were on kind of an upward trend, you know, we went down just slightly, but we've been staying in those mid-30s. And again, you know, more information about application activity for the incoming freshman class. You know, the, the number of applications from in-district students is actually on an increase, but again, a dramatic decrease from out-of-district students. Another key part of when we're looking at admissions, it's not only to be trying to increase enrollment from member towns, but also to be increasing the number of members in the district. And we have, the administration has been having a number of conversations with Watertown right now. They're looking at other communities. In fact, the reason why no one from the administration could be here tonight is because they are meeting with Watertown. So, you know, we're hoping that both increasing the district as well as the number of students in the district will, you know, help us really address some of our enrollment challenges right now. With that, I think I'm going to pause, and I want to see if you have any questions, and I don't know if it's appropriate to do this from here, but I would like to be able to ask the question and sort of gauge any interest in having members of the Board of Selectmen or, and/or others to be able to go to Minuteman and have a tour. We would love to be able to show you, you know, firsthand where things stand right now.
Thank you, Pam. Are there any questions from members of the board and responses to Pam's question on our tour?
Not financial at this time?
She's, where she's pausing for questions and then, yeah, so on what she's discussed so far. Janet?
Well, since, since I did a little bit of coaching, I asked Pam to bring up the proposed tour, because I think we had tried to, to set something up earlier in the year and sort of, there were just too many other things going on. But I still think it's a great idea to do something before it snows and, and before, before the ribbon cutting for the, the school when it opens in a year or so. I'm certainly game, and I don't care if nobody else wants to go, but I'm going to go. I, you know, I went to the, the laying of the big beam, my little, my little scribbles are somewhere on some beam in the building, so, you know, that was a lot of fun, so.
Thank you. Okay. Joan, can you use them? Thanks.
I join Janet, Pam, on your, on your tour.
Thank you.
Joan? No? Do you want to go on the tour? Okay, sure. Yeah, I mean, also for me, it depends. I'd be very interested. I've had the privilege of getting to tour the current building and, and see the programs, and it's really always incredible to see Minuteman and what all of you do there, so I think it'd be great to get to see what the new building's looking like. And my only request is that we end with lunch in their cafe, because the students there do an amazing job. If people haven't gotten to eat from the culinary students, you definitely, definitely should, so it's, it's a fun time. Yeah, and I would say, are you also thinking about inviting, I think I know there had been discussion of the, maybe the finance committee, and I wonder about inviting the school committee either to the, the building project tour or to tour it maybe once it is built, just so all of our members of the school committee have a really strong understanding and appreciation of what Minuteman does? Because I think that's really important, you know, I know they know, but I think for them to get to see it, for those who haven't, would be a really, a great opportunity for them.
Will do.
Yeah, great, okay, so maybe we'll work on doing that.
Now, you did receive some financial slides in your packet. Those were put together when the Assistant Superintendent of Finance was planning on being here. He is not here with me tonight. If you would like, I will do my best to muddle through.
Yeah, why don't we do it quick, and if we have detailed questions, we'll make sure to email them.
Oh, my God, okay. Again, budget to actual, financials to date. I'm sorry, I cannot read. So, I am going to move on because I can't read that slide from here, and I don't have a copy of it with me. This is a comparison of budget history, and I think one thing in particular to note on this slide, that if you remove the debt obligation for the, you know, for the building project, the budget would be just over 19 million, you know, just very slightly above where it was the private, prior year. We've been working over the last several years to, you know, what we, you know, what we've been saying is to be right-sizing or preparing for the appropriate number of teachers for the new building, and, you know, have been sort of reducing the number of teachers and staff as a result. We were up 0.5% this year because of a teacher we needed for a new program. So, again, as we mentioned, right-sizing the staffing levels, more level funding, all supplies and materials. I talked earlier about the grant we had received for equipment for the new school, like in the, in the budget for the building project, it doesn't include a lot of that needed equipment, so we are looking elsewhere for funding for that. Some of the issues that we'll be dealing with for our FY '20 budget and the collective bargaining agreement, we, there is a 3% increase. It's the third year of the contract. There will be additional debt serving, as you could see in the earlier chart, that will be included. I don't need to tell you about transportation costs. We are seeing a 3.5% increase. And again, you can see here other issues that are going to be, you know, drivers in our FY '20 budget. I hadn't mentioned at Minuteman, about 50%, almost half of the students at Minuteman do receive special education services, and that is the highest percentage of any public school in the Commonwealth. And again, this, and as a, as a result, you know, our special education expenditures, you know, are higher as a percentage of budget than other vocational schools. So, we talked about the enrollment, and again, you know, we have the enrollment and then the special education enrollment, and as you can see over the last several years, it's been kind of right in there, around 50%. Slightly lower this year, but, you know, still significant. The out-of-district tuition, of course, is set by the Department of Education, and then there are other factors that we add on to the base rate that you can see listed here, a special education increment of 5,300. I think that's, it was a little under 5,000 last year, so a slight increase coming up. And again, a capital fee that will be assessed starting in FY '20 on non-resident students.
Great.
Any, any further questions?
So, any questions from board members on that? So, I saw Janet first.
Just a quick question. Who are the, do you know what the town, which towns are sending out-of-district students to Minuteman? Just curious to know.
No, I don't have that off the top of my head, Janet, sorry.
Oh, I'll, I'll find out from someone else.
Yeah, I also can get that for you.
Yeah, I just would like to know if any of the, the members who withdrew from the district are now trying to send their, their kids to Minuteman.
Well, certainly the students who were already in wait.
Right, they're there, right.
That, you know, are, are still there, yeah.
Yeah, I just hope that if they have anybody new, they're struggling to get them in, so.
Joan?
My question is on the fiscal '18. Prior-year tuition, over $3 million?
Let's see. Oh, I'm trying to find where that is.
It's on that one. One, two, three, four, one down, fourth one down.
Do you mind if I come closer to look at it?
You can look at it here. Here.
You're just wondering what that is, what prior-year tuition is?
Prior-year tuition, $3 million.
It might be the out-of, I don't know if that's out-of-district student tuition or not, but.
It just seems like a large number.
I believe what that is, is a reconciliation. You know, once the budget is set, there are other students who then do enroll, so, but I will, I will clarify that for you.
Joan, you had a question?
Yes. Pam, so the, the decline in the number of students is due to the drop-off in the, in the out-of-district students. Again, what did you attribute that to?
Some recent changes in regulation for out-of-state, or out-of-district students attending Chapter 74 schools. And there is a relatively, in the last few years, new regulation that states if a sending school has any type of Chapter 74 vocational, technical, exploratory program, that ninth graders are required to stay in district to attend that program. They can't go, they can't enter out-of-district to a, out-of-district vocational school if there is an exploratory program in district. So, if, and I'm just kind of being, like, using very different extremes here. Say that there's a Chapter 77 exploratory culinary program in a school, and there's a ninth grader who knows that they want to go to Minuteman because they're really interested in advanced manufacturing, they would not be able to. They would have to attend the culinary exploratory in their home-school district.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the good work and enthusiasm you bring.
All right. Well, thank you, and I, I do want to express my thanks for the support of Minuteman.
Thanks, Pam. I'll ask you to step aside, and we might call back on you, because I'm going to ask if there are any comments or questions from members of the public. Yes?
I just have a couple of questions. So, the heating system that the building project is investing in, I'm hoping is going to be fossil fuels. I overheard something about that, so did you want to, I don't know if you want to answer about that, but I was curious.
Some on this to look into.
Thank you.
So, I'll get that.
And then, I was curious as to whether the out-of-region students get a break if they come from school districts that might, you know, be underperforming or whatever the word is, but have less money, so.
No, so, I mean, again, as Pam's presentation said, the out-of-district tuition is set by the Commissioner of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's not set by the, the districts themselves or by Minuteman, so we don't have, they don't have control over that.
Yes, I did hear that, and I was thinking if there was an opportunity that we could then appeal to the, the state to perhaps bend on that for some reason, or, and I feel like we can make the case for it, because we talk about diversity, we talk about finding ways to be inclusive, and I think this is a way to, you know, walk the walk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other comments, thank you very much, Pam, for coming tonight and for the update. And I'll tell people, we also recently saw a video presentation of the, the current construction, which was really cool to see, and I think, I don't know if students or who had put that together, but it was a really great representation of the project as well, so I'm sure we could get that out if people wanted to see it. So, next on our agenda is the Kelly's Corner update, and I will turn that over to you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. So, Kelly's Corner is a project that the community's been talking about for the last 30 or 40 years, and I'm going to give its latest update based on my participation over the last few months. It's a very exciting project. Earlier this year, we submitted our 25% plans to the state, the plans which described what we wanted to do to make the Kelly's Corner and the Charter Road and the Community Lane intersections feel like a sense of place, feel like when you're there, you're actually arriving somewhere. Include some pedestrian improvements, over two miles of new sidewalks, hundreds of new treats, street trees, and really improve the way that people and bikes and vehicles get through that intersection. So, when we submitted those plans to the state earlier this year, they, they had all their reviewers and engineers and people review, and they gave us back many, many comments. And so, we've been working at the staff level with the steering committee to understand the comments and to be responsive to the comments in a way that is responsive to the state's concerns, but also protects the integrity and the spirit of, of the project that the community asked for and the community is, is working on. And so, just last week, we met with the steering committee. Kristin Gishard did a nice presentation to the steering committee, and one of the major things that we heard from the state is that it's programmed on the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program for $14 million, 14.5. And one of the things that we heard from them is, we really want you to take measures to control costs now at the 25% stage, which you usually do value engineering later, but they wanted us to start now. And they gave us four specific recommendations that they wanted us to consider and, and respond to. So, we presented those ideas and concepts to the steering committee last week, and the steering committee didn't agree necessarily on any of the measures, but gave us a sense of the things that they'd be willing to recommend to you tonight. So, I'll just take you through the, the four discussion points that we talked about and what we'd like to do, or what I'd like to do is get your feedback, and if you're comfortable, we'd like to present our responses to the state when we meet with them next week. So, one of the major issues that the state brought up is the extensive use of brick in the design. Brick was selected in the 25% design for aesthetic reasons and for, you know, like we said, to make it have a sense of place. But they raised a lot of concerns about the long-term maintenance, the installation costs upfront, and also, there is an impact. also, uh, there is an impact on accessibility, uh, when you're dealing with brick. And so, and it's also a lot more expensive. It's two hundred and seventy-five dollars per square yard as compared to fifty dollars a square yard with concrete. So, uh, that's one item that they really thought we should, we needed to, uh, consider because they don't, according to them, they no longer support brick in their right-of-way. So we brought this to the steering committee and we showed them a few different options. Uh, you, there's a product out there that, um, you can stamp concrete to make it look like brick, you can, you can lay concrete and dye it to make it look red or to give it a look, and there's a lot of different things you can do. Uh, and, but ultimately, when we gave all these options to the steering committee, the one they felt most comfortable with was just traditional concrete, so that if we weren't gonna be allowed to do brick, they would, they would be comfortable, um, using traditional concrete as an alternative. Um, it's durable, it looks uniform and classic, um, and it's very accessible. Uh, those were the, the primary reasons. So that was one, one big item. Another big item is the buffer materials, so in the design, in addition to having sections of con- sidewalk, in the area between the sidewalk and the road, there's a, a buffer and in some places it's grass with street trees and in other places it's, um, a hardscape material and in this scenario, we had proposed brick and they, um, didn't, didn't like brick for the same reasons I mentioned earlier. And so we're still determining, uh, what, what could we, we could use as an alternative for the hardscape, but one thing we talked about was just using grass. So that's, we're gonna sort of float that concept and, and look at other, um, hardscape ideas as part of our discussions with the state. A third item was lighting. One of the great elements of this design is that it includes, uh, this pedestrian scale lighting where it's currently, um, you know, streetlights are twenty-something feet in the air and we're proposing to put these pedestrian light poles like you see out in the back parking lot here, uh, to give you a sense that you're walking and to be well lit. Um, we had proposed, uh, what do we have, a hundred and forty-five light poles and so we talked to the steering committee about, maybe there's a way we could use fifteen-foot lights instead of twelve-foot lights and install that many fewer poles, or maybe we could spread them an extra five feet apart, or different things like that to reduce the number of poles that we're installing. And although we don't wanna compromise the, the goal of the lighting, which is to, you know, provide safety lighting and to give a sense of place, we do think that there's an opportunity to reduce the number of light poles. So then the fourth one was, as you're approaching the, um, Kelly's Corner from, um, Route Two, when you get into Roach Brothers on your right, uh, there is, there is proposed to, proposal to have sidewalks on both sides, but on the right side, there was proposed to have a, uh, grass buffer strip, a sidewalk, no, a grass buffer strip with trees and then the sidewalk and then a retaining wall, which would then, it would go up to the Roach Brothers parking lot. Retaining walls are very expensive and, uh, just by simply reversing the order of the elements I just described, we can remove the retaining wall so that you'll go, it'll be, now it'll be street, sidewalk, buffer strip with trees and just grade it up to the existing Roach Brothers parking lot and that reduces the project by a few hundred thousand dollars, uh, just by changing that. So that's something that, again, the steering committee wasn't excited about, but I think they would be willing to accept that as a way to be responsive to the state. So those four measures are, um, concepts that before we go to the state next week and we'll serve and present, we wanna make sure that the board has a level of comfort, uh, with the, with the approach and that's my purpose for giving this update tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Manager. Are there initial thoughts or comments from members of the board? Janet?
Um, yeah, I honestly didn't know about the, really remember the details of the brick, but, um, I'm, yeah, I would agree that brick, unless it's, you know, fake brick that doesn't have any kind of lines in between it and looks like it's pressed, you know, concrete or something, is, is, uh, gonna be a management problem. Um, at some point, all the, the frost heaves and all that stuff, they'll start sticking up and then somebody, even somebody who doesn't have mobility challenges is gonna trip over and it'll probably be me, uh, because that's usually what happens, but, um, so I'm comfortable with the idea of just having concrete. I mean, concrete, a lot of times you're talking about concrete sidewalks versus asphalt and concrete is considered to be a luxury, but, um, I think that concrete will be, will be fine in that, that area, it will be more accessible, it would be a lot less expensive and there are other places where we can enhance the appearance of, of some of the changes. The other things, I, you know, I don't have any strong preference, it sounds as if that lasts, the number four, uh, change, getting rid of the retaining wall, um, I'm not really sure I can visualize it, but if that is gonna work and it reduces the cost, um, that would be good and the lighting, I don't know how much area lighting is supposed to cover, but, um, I, I'm inclined to have fewer lights, um, as long as people aren't, you know, stumbling over things in the dark because there's not enough light, but I assume that there is a way that you can ensure that there's enough light, but just not real, necessarily the brightest light possible, which would be preferable in any, in any event. But I'm, I'm comfortable with your discussing with the committee or among yourselves and figuring out what seems reasonable, so.
Thank you Janet.
Can I support these?
Can you use the microphone? Thanks.
I would support these recommendations.
Thank you. John?
Yes, I sat through the, uh, steering committee's meeting and Kristin Gushard's excellent, uh, presentation and, um, the, um, move to concrete was in response to the, both the high cost of bricks and the general difficulty for, for all people in walking over, um, brick, so, and concrete generally does reflect, you know, our sidewalks and walkways around town, so it's certainly consistent and I would certainly support three and four as well and I would just send the four recommendations along with John to his meeting on the twenty-second.
Thank you John. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I trust the committee and, and staff to have reviewed this and, and, you know, sometimes hard for me without the visuals, I'm more a visual person, stuff like this, but, um, I think it sounds fine. Um, I like the increased accessibility with switching to concrete over brick. Um, and then I think in terms of the light poles, yeah, I mean, I, I think we just wanna make sure we're thinking about all of the impacts of the changes, if we're bringing them up to fifteen feet, what does that mean for light spread and who that would impact and things like that, so as long as we're taking into account any of those impacts on it. And then my own question was, where, where were the, like, hardscape, um, areas that, buffers that you're now thinking of turning to, potentially to grass? Where were those in general, like in the kind of median areas or in?
So the, each approach to the intersection has a raised median
Yeah.
in the center of the road, uh, which we're not proposing to change.
Okay.
That would be landscaped
Okay.
with granite curbing.
Okay.
And in some cases, it'd be pedestrian refuge for people to use it as a way to stop before they cross the full street. Um, the hardscape that we're, or that I'm referring to is along the sides of the roads after you pass, for example, after you pass the Hosmer House and you're heading closer to the intersection, there is, uh, a proposed layout of the street, the bike lane, the granite curbing and then, um, alternating between sort of a, it was brick, hardscape of like
Oh, right, right, okay.
two and a half, three feet of brick.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, and then the sidewalk.
Right.
But, and then, so I think what we're looking at is if having that two or three feet of brick isn't feasible, can we find some, some other suitable material or just use grass and find a way to keep the grass alive? Is, is what we, we would be looking to do as an alternative.
Yeah, 'cause I think grass is great, yeah, we just have to think about maintaining it and, you know, having somebody out to come out mow that tiny little bit of grass, but I guess if they're going there anyways, I, um, that's fine. But yeah, no, I, I trust the committee and, and am happy to support, um, you going forward and, and discussing this with the state. Um, before we take any kind of vote on that though, I will ask if there's any, uh, public comment.
Tower Projects, West Acton. I was really excited to see the, um, Kelly's Corner Steering Committee meeting at night and I was glad to see everybody there. I was disappointed that they didn't let the public, well, sorry, they let everybody in the public speak but me, um, so I'm gonna give you my comments now. Um, I was very supportive of, um, at least two people on the committee that wanted to do sort of an, an integrated holistic design to address the overall issues instead of going straight to like paving materials and light bulbs. So I was concerned about that, that it seemed that we were talking about cosmetic details before talking about, like, how many lights, where are the lights, where are people gonna cross? Um, and frankly, I don't see the refuge as a refuge, if you've ever been in the city and you get to one of those islands and the cars are racing by you at thirty miles an hour, it doesn't seem like much of a refuge. I would much rather see us address the turning lane issues and I'm hoping that, uh, there is some, something going on behind the scenes relative to addressing these issues, the issues of the trees, the Hosmer House, the, uh, disabled and elderly crossing, the distances that, you know, is there something else going on besides, um, just the, the sort of cosmetic things and trying to, uh, reduce the budget to satisfy the state? Is there something else going on that wasn't evident at the meeting?
I'm not aware of.
There's a lot of work going on. We're doing, we're working very hard on this.